Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee's meeting for Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city's website, and for guest speakers joining us at the table, please do not turn off your microphones. Our first order of business is roll call. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Here.
Mr. Coghill, Ms. Gross, Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Ms. Kelsmith, Ms. Warwick, Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Strasburger, Chair.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you. Our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation which are or may be before city council. Profanity will not be permitted. Please state your name and neighborhood for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. And our first registered speaker is Jack Alto.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
I read about the longtime owner-occupant tax exemption program in the TRIP. From my understanding, this seems like a regressive tax.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Can you just state your name and neighborhood for the record?
Yes, yes. Jack Alto, Lower Lawrenceville.
Thank you.
And I'm opposed to regressive taxes which work that if you have more, which is a house with a valuable assessment, then you get more, which is more money in your pocket and lower taxes. So in contrast, as you know, progressive taxes rise with the total assets being taxed, which is why millionaires and billionaires hate them. But they're usually a better and more financially stable choice unless you're trying to do something like change incentives, for example discouraging use of addictive nicotine products. So this approach with the Loop exemption, I'm opposed to complicating the tax code because this is just another patchwork of exemptions, loopholes, and special cases. And I think we should all be starting to make the tax code understandable and enforceable. Adding exemptions makes it more vulnerable to lawsuits and raising the cost of collecting the tax. After I bought my house, I had a reassessment from the previous owner's building permit and the sale, and I had an 11x spike in taxes. So I do want everyone to not have these big spikes, but I don't think we should be further diminishing the tax base in the city. And relatedly, assessments on building permits are a disincentive for landlords to let their properties go to ruin. So I'd really love to know that there's an enforcement mechanism to make sure this exemption does not apply to landlords who are not living there and evading it. And yet again, that's another way that this exemption makes the tax more costly to enforce, which reduces the value of the discount because now you have to do additional enforcement to make sure landlords aren't bypassing it, on and on. So overall, I just think this approach is misguided, and we should find ways to make taxes more equal, understandable, incentivize landlords to not let their properties fall into disrepair. I do agree we need to fund city services and keep homeowners from getting these giant spikes, but I don't see how privileging some classes of people achieves that. And I likely will qualify for this someday, but I don't think that's fair to everyone buying after me either. So for these reasons, I'm opposed to this exemption.
Thank you. Our next registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller.
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, PhD. No, a PhD degree is a research degree that is above a doctor of medicine, doctor of theology, or a doctor of education. The Global Intelligence Society candidate, from Belsa, for president candidate 2028, among many others already. A concern of this council is to offer the best information to us at the very highest level of intelligence you can manage. So I do offer the following to you and Councilor Clemens and to viewers for information and follow-up, and that includes the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary, which I founded as a corporation in the state of Pennsylvania in 1999. And I can be reached, we can be reached, at 412-969-7997, and personally, cgsii.rlm globalintelligence@gmail.com. Now, the first one I want to show you is from the Graduate School of Industrial Administration at Carnegie Mellon University. They want me to be part of that program. It is, the address says Ronald Lynn Miller, PhD, Director, Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary, 40 Belsa revenue. I'm not going to repeat that every time I do another entry, but I wonder if Jehanian realizes that I'm being approached by one of his entities. There's Triumph. Anybody on this council know what that means? This is from Canada. I'm assuming that you're still supporters of our relationship, Pittsburgh and the country with Canada. This is the National Laboratory of Particle Physics, Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary, and so on. This is the Marine Biological Laboratory. It's a national laboratory which I'm assuming still has some funding under the Trumpian dystopian reduction of resources. Again, addressed to me. They are interested in people to be able to sign up for courses during the summer. That is one of the reasons why they approached me. The Humanity Center at Harvard University, again addressed to me, and in handwriting. So it's very personal. I've benefited from that connection we have. Center for Migration Studies. Anybody here connected to the Center for Migration Studies, given all the hoo-ha about migration. This is from Cambridge, United Kingdom, by a soft software. The Communal Studies Association, the New York Academy of Sciences, have been a member of that, University of Utah, Cornell University, Oxford University Press, and Deutsche House, which is the German house at New York University. For anybody who's interested in Clemente, we do have a file on Clemente, and Moranis is one of the focal points.
Thank you. There being no further registered speakers, we will now take comments from those in the audience wishing to speak.
Good morning, Special Agent Sunshine. How's everybody? Y'all look so happy. This is the day the Lord has made. Let us rejoice and be glad in it. Just a couple things. I have a letter from Social Security Office. Let me just bring this to light. It has an address for me for 377 West Chester Boulevard. This address for me from the Social Security Office, right here in Pittsburgh, is over 10, maybe 15 years old. Imagine that. And they told me that this is the address that they have for me. That's fraud. Somebody's lying. And I promise you, when I find them, they're going to be held accountable for their fraud with this lie. This letter is dated December 16th, 2024. Imagine that. Wow. This address is in Atlanta. Wow, that's crazy. Okay, moving on. Psalms 28:7 says, "The Lord is my strength and my shield; my heart trusteth in him, and I am helped. Therefore, my heart greatly rejoiceth, and with my song will I praise him." Thank you, Lord, for all the gifts and talents that you've given me. Even though they're being blocked right here in this chamber, they can no longer be blocked as long as I bring them forth to shine. In Jesus' name. You see, I stand on his promises to supply me with all of my needs through his riches and glory. So no matter what board you on, Lavelle, you will not block the gifts and talents given to me by the Most High God. You can block me here in this chamber, but you can't block me in the world. What you gonna do? Follow me and block me everywhere I go and try to sing and preach and teach the Word of God? You don't have that kind of time. It been TikTok for you. Proverbs, here's some wisdom. Chapter 3, verse 11 says, "Blessed are those who find wisdom; those who gain understanding." Proverbs 3:15 says, "Wisdom," which is what he's talking about, "she is more precious than rubies." My wisdom comes from the Most High, seek it daily, and I will get wisdom and justice in my case in regards to this fraud of whoever is trying to keep the house that was left to me in a will with my real name on it. Whoever changed it, woe to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Javon F. Brown. Excuse me. I live at 715 Mercer Street. That's up at the top of the hill. That's the Cady wherever his tires. And I'm looking at Mr. Coghill. If you open your mouth and start talking to him like you did while Mr. Miller was talking, I'm gonna blast and tell you to be quiet. See, Mr. Coghill, you are a businessman. You started a business. They say you do pretty good. Got a good business. I don't know how. As nasty and ignorant as you are to us, the people, I want you to understand that when we come up here and we're talking, and you go back there and talk, and you told me that you're taking care of business back there, I want to know, why is this table here? Let me tell you something. I am really upset because the mayor gave a proclamation and a plaque to Saul Dean, a previous council member's brother, Reggie Howes, who just moved into the city of Pittsburgh. He hasn't been here a year. And he's cleaning up in front of August Wilson's building. Now, when I have a resident that can't stand to watch city council, one time she was screaming at me, "You keep going down there. What have you done? What have you done?" She said, "I don't watch city council. I don't talk my personal business. I don't talk about religion because I have my opinion." And when you know what I told her? In your closed mind. If you won't even listen to what someone is saying because you already made up your mind, but you as a councilman, they put you at this table, and you're supposed to listen to us. We only got three minutes, Mr. Coghill, and you just talk hours on hours on hours, and we sit here. Now, yesterday, you had the women that came from, oh, I can't think of the name. But anyway, when it happened that you went up there, you was in the building, you seen the bad actor running and chasing me and hollering at me, you said, I said, "You didn't tell the mayor?" He said, "I don't talk to him." And that's what I'm saying. You just don't talk to each other. And Mrs. Collins, you're dynamite. I went to see her, and I'm telling her about the mayor. So she's trying to take up for the mayor, and she's trying to explain to me. And I said, "Anytime Mel says, 'Vronny, I didn't know that August Wilson's,' I mean, I didn't know that Saul Dean's brother got a plaque." And I'm saying, "He says I do proclamation." Well, she explained to me that there's other people too. But you see how messed up that office is. Anytime the women came from out near Penn Hills, right, a couple streets from Penn Hills where I lived, they came a long way. That's near Wilkingsburg. And they had messed up. Because they were looking through the thing, they said, "I don't see my name. I don't see this." So I go in, I found out, and the niece tells me, she will check into it. And it comes that someone come and told them that they had to reschedule. See, you're messed up. You're messed up. Oh, WESA is having a fundraiser. Please call.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. There being no further speakers, we will move on to our Standing Committee's agenda. Our first committee is the Finance and Law Committee, and our first deferred paper is Bill 1572.
Bill 1572, Resolution Authorizing the City of Pittsburgh to Accept the Sum of $316,367 in Full and Final Settlement of Litigation filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas involving the Finland Street Pedestrian Bridge.
Motion to hold two weeks. Second.
Second.
Discussion?
Sure, I'll give some discussion. I spoke with Councilwoman Gross earlier this morning, and she wants to hold to have a fuller conversation about what's happening along Bigelow. The fact that the crossing at Bigelow and Heron has been shut down, the fact that this crossing no longer exists, and this is effectively us receiving money for work we've actually already done. But there does need to be, have a larger conversation as planning wants to upzone and bring actually more residents to this area in terms of what is actually going to be done, and can we potentially bring in additional resources to help actually create better crossings as opposed to just simply eliminate crossings?
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hi, Madam Chair. I'm also here. It's Councilwoman Gross. So thank you, Councilman Lavelle. And as I mentioned last week, it doesn't affect both sides of our district. But I do think if we just have a couple of weeks, we can understand better what Domi intends. And we're concerned about pedestrian safety along this stretch. Most of you know it's near leak highway conditions, and yet people are still trying to cross the road. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, we have a proposal in a second for a two-week hold. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions? Bill be held for two weeks. New papers, Bill 1599.
Bill 1599, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Spillman, Thomas, and Battle, PLLC, for Expert Legal Services in Connection with the Litigation Matter in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania, for an amount not to exceed $65,662.52 over one year.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1599, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1600.
Bill 1600, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Dominique De Senzo and her attorney, Max Petrunia, PC, for a single payment in 2025 in an amount not to exceed $5,000, in full and final settlement of a claim filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas.
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1600, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1601.
Bill 1601, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of West Banko Bank in an Amount Not to Exceed $3,800 over one year, in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to the drive-through canopy of their property at 5,000 Center Avenue from a Domi Traffic Division vehicle on September 6, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1601, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1602.
Bill 1602, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Edward Torek in an Amount Not to Exceed $6,250 over one year, in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to his vehicle from an accident with a city public works vehicle on July 22, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1602, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1603.
Bill 1603, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Verizon, Pennsylvania, Inc., Care of CMR Claims as TPA, in an Amount Not to Exceed $4,521.70 over one year, in full and final settlement of a claim for damage to a utility pool at 2600 Sunset Avenue in Essence Street by a City of Pittsburgh Environmental Services Vehicle on December 16, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1603, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1604.
Bill 1604, Resolution Amending Resolution 446 of 2024, which allocated an additional $50,000 to the agreement with Frost Brown Todd LLC by authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Finance to extend the agreement or agreements with Frost Brown Todd LLC for legal assistance relating to real estate, public finance, municipal law, and as needed consultation by adding $50,000 for a new total not to exceed $250,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill 1604, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstentions? Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1605.
Bill 1605, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title II Fiscal Article IX Property Taxes by Creating a New Chapter 264 Tax Exemptions for Longtime Owner Occupants of Residential Properties.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
Second with discussion. So I'll just mention here, just chair's prerogative, we do have an amendment. It's technical in nature. It is the same exact language that we had seen prior, and it really just acknowledges that there is indeed a place in the city code that was carved out in 1993 and places that into that code. So the strikeout you see is from the old language, striking out the older language from a couple decades ago and replacing it with the language that is this bill. No changes have been made, to my understanding, from the time that it was introduced to the time this amendment was brought. So if we could actually just amend first and then discuss, since there's no actual change to the language.
Motion to amend.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Or discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Bill has been amended, so now motion on amended version.
Motion to approve with discussion?
Second.
With discussion, Council President Lavelle. Okay, so we'll invite our director and deputy from the Finance Department to join us and answer some questions we might have.
Good morning. Finance Director and Treasurer, Jen Gula.
Deputy Director, Egan Fitzgerald.
Thank you. I'll start by saying I sent you a list of questions that you very quickly, that I thought might come up today, that you very quickly responded to. And so I will, as chair, allow my colleagues to ask some questions first and fill in any that might not be asked, and we'll get them all answered. So I saw Councilperson Sharland's hand first, followed by Councilman Wilson. Councilperson Sharland, would you like to start with some questions?
Sure. So we might have more questions here. I wanted to, obviously very supportive of Loop and the concept of Loop, especially facing what reassessments might mean for most of our residents here. My question was subsection 26313, bullet point H. So here we see that this will be available for residents making under 120% AMI, for the households making under 120% AMI. I'm curious how we came up with that number, why 120% AMI?
We actually, this is what was existing in the Philadelphia legislation. And so we just basically used theirs as a model and thought that it worked well for them, and it made sense for us, too.
Okay. So I mean, my personal concern here is that I was, you know, attacked for 120% AMI for renters, saying that that is not someone that we should be helping, that they're good on their own. When renters by nature have less money than homeowners, three out of five of our renters are cost burdened, and we are now looking for subsidy here for homeowners that are by nature not cost burdened. So I'm curious how, is it just simply politics, or what is it that makes us reach that 120% number?
Nothing. Like I said, we just patterned what was there. So if there are concerns about that, I mean, definitely would be willing to, you know, research that and take those suggestions into account. I mean, we're looking at a program that isn't actually going to go into effect until there is an actual reassessment. So we're looking at data points where we only have like a beginning and no end. So.
Yeah, it makes sense to me, and, you know, I'm fully supportive of helping residents that make 120% AMI. I just know that others aren't. So, you know, I'd be curious why that number was, is acceptable in this situation with people that by nature have assets, and we're not concerned about it for people that by nature do not have assets. So.
Oh, point taken.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And to add to just the Philadelphia part, some of the reason we modeled after them is it's like a best practices approach. They've had their program in place since 2013. So you can watch their legislation as they make adjustments to it based on tried and true methods that they've come across, like bad things that have, like they extended windows of application, like various little intricacies.
Yeah, and I think that's, I mean, I think that we should be protecting residents at 120% AMI. I said, I just know that others don't feel like that's our role. So appreciate it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you. Could you do me a favor and just walk us through what we're seeing here in front of us?
Sure. So basically, in order to qualify for the program, someone has to have lived in their house for at least 10 years, including, or if they could have lived in it five if they were actually part of another program which led them to home ownership, a subsidized program. Other than that, they have to make at least 120% or less for the whole household. So it's not just necessarily one individual. It could be for multiple. So it could be for a family of four, but that would have to meet the HUD requirements at 120% of income for however many occupants are in that home. Additionally, so in order to qualify for the program, if they're, after a reassessment, their property value had increased like 1.25%. So if it went up like 25% over what it currently is, then they would also qualify for the program. We would not allow any other tax abatements either. They would be disqualified. They wouldn't, if they actually received something like an abatement under, you know, chapter 265 or 267, or, and they couldn't qualify for the homestead exemption at the same time. So it would either be Loop or homestead. In some cases, it may benefit someone if the increase is such that it doesn't, in the homestead exemption, we automatically abate the first $15,000 of assessment. So it wouldn't benefit someone to actually use Loop unless it was over that $15,000 assessment, the amount of the actual increase. So, and then they would, based on their income, qualify every year until they either opted out of the program themselves, or they were disqualified based on a change of income, or if they sold the property. What it doesn't do is change someone's assessed value. So their assessed value is what it is based on what the county reassesses it at, but what we do is abate the amount of the actual increase over what their current is. So hopefully, this also handles things like spot reassessments, where you get people in certain areas of development where they may have purchased a home that was owned by somebody a long time, and their assessment was held very low, but now the property values are increasing and they buy a house for like $400,000, but maybe the assessment is $50,000. but maybe the assessment is fifty thousand, it sort of takes that away, if their assessment ever changes and they go to, they benefit from having their taxes abated, but whoever else is buying the property necessarily would see the assessment at the same, not some lower assessment and have a municipality or school district go later and try to spot assessment and have it raised to closer to what the sales price was.
All right, thanks, and what is the tax benefit? What is the tax break here?
The tax break? It, it depends on whatever the amount of the increase would be in assessment.
So whatever the amount of the increase is, so, I'm just, that's why I'm just trying to in public, so it's, so if it goes up a quarter or above, then what, they get how much off? Or what's the calculation?
It depends on what, it depends on what the difference is in their, in their assessment.
From new versus old?
Yes.
Okay.
Over, over the twenty-five percent.
Yeah, I'm just trying to understand, like, do they pay what they've been paying if it goes up that much, or what?
They could potentially still pay an increase, but it's not going to be as drastic. Do, do you see what I'm saying?
Let's just do an example, someone's house is, is at a hundred thousand dollars.
Go ahead.
And they, um, it goes up a quarter, so that means it goes up, you know, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Or it goes up, you know, it's now a hundred and twenty-five thousand, so they qualify.
It essentially caps the increase at twenty-five percent, so then everything after that would be.
Oh, sorry, it caps what?
It caps any increase from the reassessment at twenty-five percent. So therefore, any dollar over, they would then get an exemption.
So it only goes up a quarter?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah. So whatever that qu- whatever that quarter will be.
Right.
So if they increase fifty percent, they would get an exemption on twenty-five percent.
On twenty-five percent over the twenty-five percent.
If it was, if it went up twenty-three percent, they wouldn't qualify, they would choose homestead would be the option they would go with.
Yeah, so two ways to enter in the program is make a hundred and twenty thousand AMI or less per household, or if it goes up.
It's, it's an and, you need both.
Okay, so there's not, there's not a, there's not another way you can get into the program, you have to make at least.
Yep.
You have to make, uh, less than a hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty percent AMI.
Yes.
Okay, all right, I thought I heard there was another avenue to get into the program. And when the program, when do you foresee this program starting?
When there's a reassessment.
When do you think the reassessment will be, any clue?
No comment.
No comment.
Have no idea.
Okay, um, and just so we're clear, reassessment, does that get us more revenue?
It, it's not supposed to, we're supposed to be revenue neutral.
People think we're getting more revenue whenever we do reassessment, okay, revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral.
Okay, and then, what about, um, how do we implement it, you're gonna have a little thing on the website, how's this happen?
We will post the information on the website, there'll be an application, um, with instructions on how to apply. Um, we've even, actually Ian's developed a calculator, um, that will be posted there as well, that will help people figure out which program is better for them, based on what their assessment is, right, so they'll be able to plug in their information, their assessment, current assessment, the change, and see whether they should qualify or would be better off served by the homestead exemption or by the Loop program.
All right, great, so whenever reassessment happens, that will go up on the?
Yep.
On the webpage?
It'll, right.
On the financial or finance department?
It'll go on the finance webpage, and there'll be an application window usually between, um, it should be between January and June of the current tax year.
Any mailing to the public, or just all by, by, uh, internet, social media, word of mouth?
Probably that, because we would actually have to mail out unless we did it, uh, um, with the actual tax bill and enclosed. I think we've actually been discussing doing, make, maybe like a newsletter that would go out with a tax bill and we could supply information that way.
Yeah, and then the, would the cost of the mailing go up?
Yes, it would, yes.
Uh, or if you just slipped a little thing in there and said, hey.
It'd still go up, yeah.
It would still go up, yeah. Not just the mailing, but the printing, so it may not weigh anymore with a little flyer, but we would actually have to have it printed, so yes, the cost would go up.
Okay. I thought there was some difference between this program and Philly's program.
There is, and that's actually.
Like when you said that you just took the hours from Philly and used it, I thought that was, that was not the case.
No, there are some.
So we, we took it as like our baseline, you know, with it being the, the only real entity that, or municipality that's done this, because they weren't, a lot of municipalities weren't allowed to do this until last year. Um, so we used them as the, the baseline and tweaked it, looked at how our operations worked. For instance, Jen mentioned the, the January to June sixth application window. Um, doing an analysis of our year-end, beginning year processes where we send, set everything up to bill, we are trying to factor in everything we can ahead of time, so that, you know, we, we give enough window for them to apply, but it also then gives us enough time for the next year to make sure that we have their records correct. Um, you know, because we have a very short window of time when we get the county's initial provisional certified values and then the actual certified values, and then the billing goes out, so we have a very short time.
But just to confirm, the AMI, a hundred and twenty percent AMI, that's the same as Philly?
Yes.
What's different is the actual twenty-five percent, so theirs is at fifty, and, um, when we sort of played around with the calculus.
That's the difference.
Theirs is at fifty and we lower ours to twenty-five. Um, mostly because when we.
Why is that?
Why?
Yeah.
Uh, we actually use the calculator and put in different scenarios to look at what the change would be and how much of an increase in tax someone would pay with a fifty percent increase before we would abate the rest of it. And it seemed like a lot, and it seemed to not be with the actual spirit of the legislation and what we're actually trying to do, so we lowered it, so it was basically putting in data, trial and error, and see what made the most sense to us in order to be able to put that in the legislation.
How much less revenue is that for us, do you know?
We won't, I don't know that we'll really know until there's an actual assessment and we know how many people actually qualify, which is a problem, we don't know, because we're sitting at, at one point, we don't have another data point to compare it to, to see what that would look like.
And, and because the county hasn't reassessed in, over a decade, it's hard to even see how their reassessment would work, which makes, so we have to set the stage and then we will be prepared to evaluate as we go.
Okay, any benefit to doing this now than waiting until the reassessment happens?
Well, there's no, no real trigger, there's no real trigger, I mean, the trigger is the reassessment. Um, if someone does an improvement to their home that's beyond like regular maintenance, I mean, they would not be qualified for the program as the legislation is written, so like if you put an extension on your home which added square footage, which obviously would increase the value, it's not something that would be eligible for Loop. But if you replaced a roof, it would, but it still would need a reassessment because likely the amount of the assessment wouldn't trigger the Loop program, the amount of change.
Yeah, I was just talking about the legislation that we're seeing from us, like, why not just wait until the, so we have a little more understanding of what's going on?
We are, we are hopeful as the reassessment, if, if the county chooses to reassess, um, that they would start communicating with us on timelines and how they would communicate the changes. So we are hopeful that they would give us data points on the earlier side, because they're, they're gonna roll it out ahead of a tax year, right, so we, we have to always be responsive to them, and we're hoping we have a faster timeline, or a longer timeline than a typical approach. So we aren't even sure how long it's gonna take them to do a reassessment, so it's one of the things is get on the books, we can always tweak it, or, or council can always tweak it later as we get a little more information, um, so basically, you know, we're we're a little bit in the dark on what the county is going to do, when they're going to do it, how they're gonna do it, um, where the value changes are gonna go, like what neighborhood, we, we, you know, we can guess certain neighborhoods that have a lot of development, and you'll see this happen, and this is.
Yeah, so should we have this expire, so that we're aware that we don't have to like re, re, um, commit to this? So that, so we're not missing, you know, whenever, I mean, I imagine people would be like, hey, remember that Loop thing we did?
Yeah.
Now it's county assessment, but
I don't know if we have.
Now we can bring that up and make sure it's okay, like what?
I don't know if we have to have it expire, because it'll sit there and do nothing for now, until the reassessment happens, so it's basically in preparation.
I just wonder if there's a, like a reminder we can get, you know, we just do an outlook, calendar reminder.
Have you, yeah.
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't know, yeah, someone has a, a way to tie this to, you know, whenever, you know, maybe it's just a memo that's sent to council in our Tuesday meeting or something where
To remind us.
Upon, you know, the assessment taking place, notification of all, council will be notified of all, um, you know, relative programs, something like that.
Okay.
And during the reassessment process, we will, uh, our department will definitely be prepared to be nimble as possible, because you talked about the revenue neutral component of a reassessment, we're gonna have to do a bunch of functions on our end anyways for forecasting, for making sure it is revenue neutral, so like, we're already gonna be really in the weeds of what's coming, um, because we always key off of the, the county, so. We will account for it, for sure.
And not to mention operationally, I mean, who knows when this reassessment is coming, but I would rather have enough time to work out the bugs and to be able to prepare on our end, which also means potentially making changes to a tax system in order to incorporate these changes, and I would rather have a lot of time in, in order to be able to do that than have to do it immediately on the fly when the, when, you know, the assessment goes. I mean, it's a lot more difficult than, than being properly planned ahead of time for when it does happen.
Okay, I don't have any further questions, thanks.
Thank you, Councilwoman Warwick.
Yeah, thank you, um, so, yeah, I have some questions, so the first one is, I, I think that Councilman Charlin raises a really good point, uh, he and I don't always, we agree on, on, on some things. But, uh, you know, the hundred and twenty percent AMI, you know, I, I don't think that a single person making eighty thousand dollars plus, just a single person, you know, living, who, homeowner, right, uh, should get a, I mean, and there's already the, the homestead exemption, right, so they already have access to a break because they live in the home, right? And it, it seems to me that someone at that income level doesn't need an additional break. Again, um, and also eighty percent AMI generally is the level at which all of our assistance programs like kick in, you know what I mean, for, for, for homeowner, right? Like, like own PGH and whatever, that, that tends to be at an eighty percent AMI level. Um, well, that's not a question, that's just a, you know, observation, so I appreciate the councilman for bringing that up. Uh, and we, something we can talk about after the public hearing for sure. But I'm a little confused, so it's like ten years for most people, right? But it's five years, you only have to have lived in the home for five years if you received assistance to buy the home. But then it says that it doesn't apply to people who got assistance to buy the home, so I don't understand that. If I'm reading, may, maybe I'm, maybe I'm reading it. Where was the? In the eligibility. I thought that it said. I'm not finding it, but I thought, did it, I thought that it said that you are not eligible if you applied for assistance to buy the home.
I think it relates to the, um, part about the abatement programs, as in like that does not.
Oh, okay, so that's just regarding, that's not, that's not assistance, like URA assistance or whatever to have bought the home? That's only for if you've applied for other abatements?
I think you're eligible for the abatements and in that, in that scenario, is the way I read it.
Okay, maybe I was just misreading it. Okay.
They received an abatement under Chapter two sixty-five.
Oh, so here we go, so this condition of eligibility shall not apply to a property for which the owner received or benefited from assistance provided in connection with the acquisition of the property as part of a government or nonprofit subsidized low or moderate income housing.
Which is related to the other abatements, two sixty-five or two sixty-seven. So if you received a two sixty-five abatement, but also received assistance in order to purchase the home, you could still qualify for the program. You cannot, if you did not receive assistance to purchase the home and you received an abatement under two sixty-five or two sixty-seven, you do not qualify.
Okay, okay.
That's what it means.
Okay, okay, so I just wanted to, to clarify that, okay, um. As far as the improvements, what is, I mean, I guess I'm a little concerned about, I mean, okay, like an extension on your house, I get that, right? That's a big improvement, but what if I put in new windows, or what if I, like, redo my kitchen? Or I paint the house, or do?
So I think we would have to defer to building permits in order to determine the level of improvement, but something like a new roof, or if you painted it because it needed it, or even new windows if they were outdated.
Okay.
Would be something that would be considered maintenance, however, you could potentially be disqualified if you redid your kitchen and improved it in such a way that increased your square footage, or increased the overall functionality. So it would be something that's not necessarily a basic necessity to maintain the home. If it went above that, and based on the amount of the building permit, then you could potentially be disqualified from the program.
And to add to that, so the way that we receive value changes associated with building permits is a separate process than like a annual assessment. So we get value change files throughout the, the year, that will note if a value goes up and down because of that, and for some of the reasons homesteads, um, very same. So like, that's the mechanism that would cause that, so this, like, insulates us from someone being eligible based off of those changes as well.
Okay, I mean, I guess I'm just sort of in my head like scenarios, is I, you know, I would hate a situation where it's like, oh, you know, my mom has lived in this house forever and I really wanna redo her gross old cabinets, you know what I mean? And I want, and so like, you know, the, the kids come in and do something nice for them, and then it's like, oh, now you're not eligible.
And if, if I'm not mistaken, I do believe building permits do tell you whether it's something that's a replacement as opposed to an improvement, so like, if you got a new roof, it would probably say you're replacing what's existing, right? Which leads us to believe it's more of a, a maintenance thing, or if you were replacing cabinets because they're falling off the walls, it's a replacement. You're not increasing what was there, you're just replacing what was there. You have an old fence that's falling down, you're not changing the height of it or the area that it's fencing in, but you replace it because it needed maintenance, so something like that. We wouldn't want people to not do that in order to disqualify themselves from the program when they needed it, right? If that makes sense.
And when we share your concern, because in an earlier version of this, when we were working on it, there was a, a value that was assigned to the improvement. And we were like, we don't want that because of this scenario, I was like, well, what if a roof needs replaced? Like, we don't, we don't want to cause it to be the, the homeowner chooses to not fix their house and keep it up so they can keep the tax, we don't want that, so we're, we're definitely in agreement.
Okay, okay, maybe that's something we can kind of look at a little more close, or specify a little more closely, I mean, even, again, like, I'm, like, even if it's like, oh, you know, I have one of the, and it's like, oh, my mom's, I just think of like, you know, like, people like to, you know, like, oh, my mom's always wanted a bigger kitchen, if we just took this wall out, we could like, give her like an open floor, like, you know what I mean? And that would seem like a pretty modest change. You know, I don't know, I, I guess I'm just kind of, you know, playing out scenarios, okay, so, um, so you can choose the Loop or the Homestead, and then the last question I have is that it says that it is, that it only applies, if I'm reading it correctly, to area, quote, areas of deteriorated vacant or abandoned homes. Do we know, can you give us some examples of some of the communities that that includes?
Well, I think later in the legislation, we actually included all wards of the city, specifically because we don't know what those areas are gonna
And also references established residential areas or the deteriorated.
So, I mean, my, all wards of the city, that, that concern me a little bit, because I've got some neighborhoods in my district with like fabulous homes, you know what I mean? And, so I guess that's the AM, where the AMI comes in.
That's where the AMI would come in, and potentially the ass, the assessment increase as well, like if maybe they don't increase twenty-five percent over what they're already assessed at.
That may be, although, gosh, the property value increases have been, I mean. That may be, although, gosh, the property value increases have been, I mean, pretty substantial, yeah.
So it would, it takes all of that.
Okay, good, okay, so that, that covers it with the AMI. Okay, I think that's all the questions that I have, at least right now, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coghill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, thank you, Jennifer Ian. Uh, I, I want, I want to say this, you're always very well informed when you're at this table. You know, this is something that's new for you as well, only a few weeks old. And I know you kind of mimicked what Philadelphia does, but still, it's new. And you seem to have the answers to most of the questions. I think there's still some things that are outlying to Councilwoman Warwick's question as to, you know, new kitchen versus new roof. I think it's pretty simple, I, in the way of adding square footage, you know? Anything else is maintenance, everything, anything else, they don't come in and look at your kitchen when they do reassessments. They go by everybody around you, the square footage, how many bedrooms. So nobody's gonna come in and judge if I redid my basement and made it a living space, that, oh, that increases the house. That never comes in play, from what I remember.
Not in, not necessarily unless they increase what we, we would refer to as the livable square footage.
That's what I'm saying, right, that's what I'm saying.
Your house is, you're not changing the square footage of your house necessarily, but you're
So what you're saying is, in the basement, right, in the basement that wasn't livable, and if I redid it, and now it's livable, so that could be.
Yep.
And the only way they would know is if by permits being taken out, I guess.
Right.
Because never do they enter a house and be like, let me make sure your changes are, so, okay. Okay, so, see, I, I really think it really comes down to square footage as much as anything there. You know, if you add an addition on, obviously, you know.
Right.
It's, it's, it's pretty obvious. So, to Councilman Wilson's question, which I, I agree with him, like, why are we, I understand getting all the ducks in a row, but why would we do this without knowing how many people or what effect it's going to have once it comes to fruition? I mean, why can't we just line everything up and then take a vote on it? I mean, what if, I would think, you know, everybody's gonna jump above twenty-five percent. I mean, I, I, I don't know that for sure, but that's just my estimation, is to, you know, the assessments as to what they are in this city and what the sales prices are going? I would think that very few people are gonna be below twenty-five percent. Go ahead, Ian, did you have something?
So we did attend, or at least I, I know I did, and I know the controller spoke at this call, I think it was arranged by the state senator, one of the state senator's office, about how like the assessment would potentially play out. And then I think the, the push at the time was to get a state law that would require counties to do reassessments on a regular basis. But in that conversation, there was an assessor who, who basically was like, the general approach that they take, and again, this came from this call, is that a third go up, a third stay the same, a third go down is the general approach. But we, I can look into that a little bit further, so hopefully that insulates us.
What, do you know when Philadelphia was reassessed last time?
Two or three years ago.
Okay, so, so, so they do regular.
So they are a city-county relationship, so they actually have their property assessment within their city jurisdiction. So they, they get the control.
It's not so dramatic in their case, because they've been doing it regularly. In our case, you know, we have homes that are assessed at eighty-five thousand dollars, that are now selling for three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, so.
Or more.
Or more, right, yeah, absolutely. That's why I say, I feel like very few are gonna come in under the twenty-five percent once we are reassessed. And, and let me ask you this, is the county executive have to be in on this conversation, obviously, right? No? Is that right? So we can set the standard for what this city and municipality wants to do. So any municipality, Monroeville, Mount Lebanon, they can all do that.
Yeah.
Which will affect overall, not just the city of Pittsburgh, but the property taxes for the county and what they are estimating from a reassessment, if, you know.
Well, they, this will only apply to city taxes.
Yeah, right, right, city.
But they can use what we've done as a model to do their own program. I mean, we used Philly's as a model to do ours, so there's nothing stopping them from taking this and doing the same for them, so. But it won't apply to the county portion or the school district, just the city tax.
So we don't even know if and when the county executive is gonna do a reassessment. We, I know we don't know that. It might be next year, and but even when we do get that started, it's going to be a couple of years before it comes to, you know.
I mean, they could say next year they're gonna start it, but it's gonna take them a few years to complete it.
Right, exactly, right, right. So, and that's to my question, why, and to Councilman Wilson's really question, is to, why are we putting the cart before the horse here? I mean, why, why would we pass this now, not knowing when, just to be prepared, is that right? Is that why?
And it can always be adjusted, especially like once, if the county chooses to do a reassessment, we would have more information and could come in and tweak some components of it. An example being, we have a component that if over five years your property goes up a fifty percent, you also qualify. That's sort of a placeholder to protect in case the county does multiple reassessments. And if they, if they get on a faster schedule, so that would probably be a suggestion I would have, is we tweak that based on, if the county's like, hey, we're gonna do it every five years, then we can change that language or get rid of that language. But we don't know what's gonna happen, but we want to be prepared. I think the question also about being able to have our website up with applications, the calculator I can tweak, we can, but we also have to code it so that it goes into the website. So there are some steps that we want to be able to almost lay the framework. And if we have to tweak the framework, it's much easier to do it once it's built than it is to like redo it all.
And Ian, once the reassessments are done, we will have an exact number.
Yeah.
We'll be able to say a hundred thousand people.
And we'll be able to project it going forward as well.
I think it's gonna be a big number in the city of Pittsburgh, I really do. With the median income at a hundred and twenty percent versus twenty-five percent, I, I, I believe almost everybody in the city of Pittsburgh's going up above twenty-five percent once the reassessments are done. I don't know, maybe I'm just thinking my district, but, you know, it seems to me like we're all severely under assessed. Okay, that's it for me, Madam Chair, thank you, I appreciate, you know, you, you're knowledgeable, you knowledges in such a short period of time, right?
I'm just, I'm just gonna really compliment him, because he really dug into a lot of this. I mean, he do a lot of divine and conquer, and this is Ian's baby, pretty much, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gross.
Hi, thank you all. This is, these have been really good questions, because I think this is, as we heard from some public comment, and we're already hearing out in the neighborhoods, that this is, you know, it's a lot of details, it's a lot of moving parts, so I think it's, it's good to get some of this basic discussion out now. We want people to be able to understand the program that is proposed really well before we have a public hearing, so that they're really informed. Just to clarify some of the questions that we've already heard, is that this is not a program for landlords, correct?
Correct.
Correct. This is not a program for, you know, someone who lives in Florida
Nope.
and owns a property. And, and they will pay full taxes, they will not be eligible for this program.
Correct.
The title is long time owner occupied program, right?
Yes.
So it's only if you live there.
Right.
And you can prove you live there. You live in this house, and you have lived in this house for a long time. Those are the only people who are eligible. I just want to kind of get that out. And we talked about neighborhoods that have tripled, where the house values have tripled in value. And, you know, I'm having flashbacks to ten years ago when some of my colleagues were here, and rightfully, they were telling me, Councilwoman, you know, that's just your district. It's not my district, or it's not the other neighborhoods. And I said, but one of, one of these days, this will happen in other neighborhoods of the city, right? And it is happening now. But as contrast, imagine the house, the average home sale in one of your neighborhoods, not tripling, but going up tenfold in a five-year span. So central Lawrenceville, the twenty thousand dollar house became a two-hundred thousand dollar house, right? And there were twenty thousand dollar houses. So, in just, in a really fast time. And so that, you know, everybody can see that happening, they can, they see, you know, especially if you've got a fifteen-foot wide house in a townhouse, you see the people who've moved in next door, you see what that house looks like compared to the house that you have. And, and the reason that we should do this now and not wait is that when you're just surviving on social security and Medicaid, and you see those home values, you don't know when the county's gonna reassess. So you, you leave anyway. You leave because you're afraid. You don't know when that reassessment's coming, and you're afraid. And so you leave. And so that's what we've already seen happen, I think, in enough. It's enough neighborhoods where that has already happened. We have already lost, everyone tells their grandma to sell their house, and those grandmas go to suburban areas, and then they call me later and I said, please, don't sell your family houses. And then they call me now, like they do, and say like, my grandma's so sad. And now I don't have any family left in Lawrenceville or Bloomfield. And that's, I think, a really important part for neighborhoods. It is literally work that the neighborhoods are doing to try to keep what they call memory keepers in their neighborhoods. Because it's not just important in a kind of charitable way for that household, but it's actually better for everybody. It's actually an important part of the neighborhood, to have people who are income diverse, age diverse, and to have that social fabric of personal connections, and we don't want to lose that. I always say, you know, we're not Upper Sinclair, you know, no offense to Upper Sinclair, but a sea of strangers, just a sea of bedrooms is not the reason people move to the city neighborhoods. All right, and so I think it's really important that we should move, even if we have to change it later. I think it's really important that our constituents see that we are going to put some kinds of protections in place. Sorry, I said program, it's long time owner occupied protections, right? It was a program, what's the title, program, it's private, but these are protections. And, and they are in fact a form of abatement. And so I just had my staff look up other abatements that this council has put into place. We have voted on them, they are being distributed right now. Mostly, if you build anything in the city of Pittsburgh, there's an abatement that you get automatically. You don't have to have approvals. And so, for example, one address in my district was purchased in twenty twenty-one for six hundred and nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars. It is assessed at four hundred and fifty-four thousand nine hundred dollars. To date, I think, if you include, so it's just a couple of years, if you include library, parks, school, and city taxes, they have gotten a nineteen thousand sixty-dollar abatement so far. They have not paid us, our city treasury, eight thousand dollars alone, right? Just our city treasury, not even parks and libraries and the other stuff. So there are very, very, very high-income homeowners with very expensive houses that are getting tax discounts, that we created. So I think it's, it's really good, again, this, I'm not saying that we won't change our minds or adapt to whatever happens in twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty, or twenty thirty or something, but, but I think it's an important thing. We should take our time, we should make sure we understand it, we should make sure constituents understand it and that we hear from them. But I think we do act, I think we should act. I think this is a good framework that is in front of us right now. It does also apply, one of the things that hasn't been mentioned, that is, it ends if you sell your house.
Yes.
Right, so, you know, maybe my constituent who's, you know, the, some that are left with, that are, you know, still in their houses that are on social security and Medicaid, you know, they will get this discount as long as they own their house, as long as they're there. And then, once that house is sold, this, the protection of the discount, the abatement ends.
It ends, and we get the full value of the assessment that's in place. Instead of trying to have someone appeal their assessment, roll it back to a number that is affordable to them. And then we have to do a spot re-assessment later in order to get closer to the actual sale price.
And FYI, for my example, the six hundred and sixteen thousand dollar condo, that, that was new construction. Right, most of our abatements that we give out are new construction. So, yeah, brand new, newly constructed, six hundred thousand dollars, and you get a property tax discount. So, I'll leave it at that, thanks.
Thank you, Councilman Mosley.
Thank you, thanks for coming today. Um, my, my first question is, you know, what were the, the key lessons that you learned from your analysis of the Philadelphia program? You know, the, the things that, you know, you learned that you put into the Pittsburgh program for the purposes of this conversation, and the things that you thought that weren't appropriate, you know, for implementation here? But what were some of the key things that you came away from your analysis?
So the biggest takeaways for us was their, I guess their processing time or their application window. Obviously, I think they have a year-round application window, if I'm not mistaken. And that doesn't necessarily work operationally for us. It would be very difficult for us to continually approve applications year-round, considering the amount of work that my staff does do, which would be at a disservice to the actual applicants. It would be harder for us to initiate the program or carry through on the program. So it's not a service to the taxpayer. Additionally, the change that we made was to, like I stated before, the actual assessment change. When we looked at the data and we plugged in certain numbers, beginning and ending, the amount that they use is fifty percent, and that to us seemed like a lot when we were looking at the, the difference in, because someone's still gonna have to pay an increase likely, so anything over twenty-five percent, we would abate. So they could still be paying a tax increase. But the tax increase between something that was a twenty-five percent increase and a fifty percent increase seemed like an awful lot. And it didn't seem to keep with the spirit of what we were actually trying to do. So, which is why we lowered it.
Thank you.
So, do you have anything?
Yeah, one other component of it is that they have a cap on the overall
Right.
tax dollars that are saved associated with the program. When it initially started, I believe it was at twenty million, and they reduced it to thirty-five million. We sort of changed the legislation to be, have a resolution by council annually, which we would rope into the, the part of the forecasting budget process, so that we can be flexible in nature. And some of the reason we chose that is because of, we are, we're operating in two different worlds, because Philadelphia has their own assessor's office in the city, so they can communicate and know, and know exactly how things are gonna play out, whereas we're reliant on
Another entity.
Another entity. And so I think we, we wanted to craft it that way, where we could change it each year if, if we saw data points that were concerning, related to like, you know, the, the concerns about everyone's property going up. If we started seeing that, we might be able to also amend the legislation, you know, ahead of time, or have a cap. And then the cap would basically stop and spread the money out equally. So that's one mechanism that Philadelphia uses to control how much money they would basically get abate for this program. So we would intend to work with council on a resolution at the end of the year based on the data we get, but we can't do that until we get the data, which needs to be the reassessment. So that's some of the, the logistics we've been working through, is like, how do we prepare ourselves? And so that way, if we were, let's say we got data sources from the county in the fall, we would be able to have conversation with council, hey, we think the cap should be this, and then we could actually forecast worst-case scenario and, and build our budget models off of that. So, and then if the county was reassessing on a regular basis, we would have learned from all these processes and continue to improve and improve and improve, and go from there.
And, 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 and has there been any analysis, obviously, you know, I'm not asking if y'all did the analysis, but if, you know, any, one has been able to do analysis on how, you know, this program has impacted, you know, the, the revenue for the city? I know a couple of my colleagues have, have mentioned kind of the uncertainty of, of the situation that we're in. But being that this program has existed for over a decade in Philadelphia, have, you know, have we been able to, to do an analysis of how it has impacted revenue? Has there been, you know, years, being that I guess every couple of years they do an assessment? You know, how has this impacted revenue, you know, you know, for the city? Has there been any dramatic, you know, changes, you know, for, for the city-county of, of Philadelphia? Has, has there been an ability to do that, or it may be a third party or someone like that? You know, has, has made that, that analysis and took a look at that?
No.
We've not dug that deep into that. And some of it is because of that cap, we knew what the worst, not worst-case here, what the total tax exemption would be from their program, which was twenty million when they first started, now thirty-five. And so I think that was sort of my approach, was when I looked at, okay, they know that, where, that where's that amount of tax revenue they're going to lose is that and that like, then it stops. So I think that we can dig into that a little bit further.
Sure, sure. Um, and and is is the length, um, 10 years in Philadelphia as well?
Yes.
Yes.
And has it always been 10 years from the from the inception of the program?
I believe so. If I can dig back in, you know, I spent an afternoon looking through their legislature or their equivalent, trying to piece all the changes that happened since then.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah. And and, um, and then another, just what I wanted to mention, I do think, you know, Councilwoman Warwick and, um, Councilman Charlotte make an interesting point about, you know, the 120% AMI. I know in Philadelphia, um, the cost of living is significantly higher, wages are significantly higher, um, you know, in in Philadelphia, um, and obviously, you know, from a certain point of view, you know, the the 120, you know, is supposed to be apples to apples as you go for a city, 120 mean, you know, something. But I think we all know that, you know, even within that number, there still may be a discrepancy just because of the higher wages and the higher cost of living, you know, in Philadelphia. So it may be worth, you know, looking into that 120 number and seeing if that, you know, is truly apples to apples or, you know, do we have to, you know, arrive at at a different number to have, um, you know, more parity, um, you know, between the two regions, um, you know, just given, again, that the the cost of living as well as the wage, you know, discrepancy between, um, you know, our two regions. But again, uh, thank you for your information. I think that exhausts my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before we move on to second round, I I do have some questions that I'll fill in, um, as well. So again, want to note, thank you for taking the questions that are put in writing and answering them even before in one in one day before this this morning's, um, set of questions for you. And my colleagues have asked many of them, so I'm glad that we were able to to share that with you. Um, I'll also note just before I forget, we will need to, I believe, hold this for a public hearing. So after this, we'll we'll need a motion, um, ideally from from President Lavelle again to hold for a public hearing. But, um, so that'll give us some more time to continue to understand, ask questions, you know, um, ask you questions directly. So my first question is whether, um, the law department provided input or helped to draft an opinion on the proposed legislation. I know you said that they did provide input, but have they have they drafted a memo regarding legal liability or exposure on on this bill?
Okay.
No. Okay. And we've heard, you know, several questions along these lines, just the concern that potentially some of the largest beneficiaries could be the most affluent residents, owner occupants who live in, um, expensive homes that have risen in market value since the last assessment, maybe earn limited income, but they live off savings that aren't calculated. Is there any way, we know median income is the easiest to calculate? Is there any way to calculate and take into account other in other savings or other income they might have?
I, well, we would have to have something that would be ver- easily verifiable.
Yeah.
Is the, which is why we usually defer to tax return or something that's issued through, like, for Act 77, it's usually a social security statement. And I would think that even if we use something like net profit or, you know, on a tax return, if they're receiving dividends, I would think they would be present in their tax return as well. But wouldn't necessarily give us an indication on savings, so.
Yeah. It it's just, I'm getting at, and I I don't expect you to have an answer today, I just wanted to raise the question. Like, there are a whole set of people who, um, would would qualify and should qualify, you know, kind of is the purpose of this. And then there are there are probably a handful of people, you know, handful of neighborhoods in this city where the there are some unintended consequences because we're just not using the metrics that are totally accurate. So if there is any consideration there as we continue the conversations or another way to calculate it, I just wanted to bring it up. And maybe tinkering with, uh, you know, 120% AMI starts to get us there a little bit. I don't know. Yeah, okay. Currently, I understand we don't have our rough estimate of how many homeowners would be eligible for the program or where they reside because we don't have that information from the county yet. But we will when the county initiates its reassessment or finishes it. At what point in the reassessment process will we kind of know, like, which neighborhoods will be most likely to qualify for this program?
I mean, we won't know until we see the changes because everything's going to be distinct to each parcel, right? So if a $100,000 parcel goes up 200,000, that qualifies.
Yeah.
Until we see the data points from the county through their reassessment process. And I honestly don't know what that will be or when we would receive it or like the timeline or anything.
Within the process, yeah. And then just, you know, you mentioned something interesting. We we have, we always use the example of Philadelphia, which is an imperfect comparison for many reasons, but one, because it's a city, county. Have you seen any jurisdictions, any cities that have a separate municipal or separate municipality from county that have implemented this, that have benefited from, say, like, a shared employee from a reassessment office that would also be embedded in our equivalent of a finance office like we do with OCHS and County Health Department and some shared employees there or, you know, sort of a county employee embedded in the city? Have you seen that? I'm not trying to do the job of the administrator of the city and the mayor of the city and like, but have you seen that in your professional experience?
I can't say that I have.
Yeah, okay.
Honestly, I don't even know that I would have thought to look.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So.
Just to say that if there's an internal assessment office in the city of Philadelphia, because they are also a county and that helps to get the information a little bit more quickly and have that embedded, I just wanted to mention it.
Yeah, I have not seen it. Um, but another point on that is they've also taken the approach of doing regular reassessments too. So like, there's that component of they are willingly doing it all the time. So they've been able to work through all these problems over the years or even like, just they know it's coming. Like the example I gave with the cap, when it went up from 20 million to 35 million, they did that because they knew they were reassessing. So like, they were, because they're one voice, it makes it easier.
Yeah, and sorry, my question presupposes that we have regular reassessments and we can get to a point where it's every three years, every five years max, and we're not waiting 12 years and
Right.
politics to dictate what
Yep.
happens. Right. Which I'm fully in favor of and I think many, many of my colleagues agree with as well. Okay, um, seeing some of these questions have already been asked. Were there any documented cases, I know that we can probably think of some ourselves, but did you see any documented cases of longtime residents being displaced primarily as a result of increased property assessments in 2012? Interrogatory? Councilman, Councilwoman?
How would you know what their motivation was? I mean, we'd have, you'd have to be a mind reader.
So no. Okay. Did we consider providing the tax benefit in the form of a deferral rather than an exemption? I mean, ostensibly, not every case, but ostensibly they are reaping a windfall upon sale because of the nature of this program. We know that there's going to be a big, um, a big increase in in, um, property value. Even if it's not 100% of what is owed, if that they would have paid, um, were it not for the Loop being implemented, a portion of that, like, could that be considered? Has it been considered?
So I I feel like, I feel it's more of a penalty, actually, and it could have unintended consequences. Like, why would somebody even consider selling when they should if they would have to pay the portion that was abated at sale out of their proceeds? And let's be clear, I mean, we don't know how long could be between the time they were approved for the program and the abatement started as to when the sale could be. I mean, what if it's 10 years from now? I mean, potentially, if it were the the seller, they could maybe lose pro- a lot of their proceeds in order to pay that tax bill. Or what if it's passed on to the buyer? Like, why would the buyer consider buying the property if they knew that they then they had to accommodate for someone's tax abatement? Like, it it seems more detrimental than a positive.
And you're looking at that both as like, A, that is, those are people, that is just not like churn in the market that we want to see where then new newcomers, new first time home buyers would want to purchase and they're just sitting on it, even more so than they are like today.
Right.
And those are potential revenue sources through the transfer fees that we're not receiving. So it would be interesting to see that kind of comparison of like what or some sort of metric there, if it's possible to calculate.
Yeah, there's, there would be concern too that you're basically forcing their hand to stay, not just from a financial perspective or revenue on our end, like you just don't want to, yeah, if they're sitting on a $10,000 tax bill after 12 years, maybe they're less inclined to to make a choice, right? They're almost forced to stay. Not that we don't want people to be in our city that are here for a while, but that's one unintended unintended consequence that we could think of. Another approach we took with the, to why we didn't really consider deferrals is we, from an operational perspective, like, which is what I I care about a lot as we're developing new tax systems and and just from like an ease of view, like, we don't want to roll out a program that also reinvents the wheel. And so it's, it'll be a lot easier for us to administer as well. So like, you get into complications of tracking or building a system that has a deferral and all that. So we we took the approach also selfishly of the Department of Finance operates using the homestead exemption as a good example. So why not craft our Loop program similarly so that we can make it a an easier implementation?
Right. Yeah, there's aspects to homestead and Act 77, at least from a qualifying standpoint, that already exist and exist in our system as well. And our staff has actually, in the past, qualified and seen applications. So for us, it just made more sense overall.
There's just so many considerations and like, getting into the psychology of homeowners and buyers. And what I'm trying to get at clearly, and I think a lot of us are too, is like, how do we balance out the needs of longtime owner occupants, renters and of all income levels and new homeowners or newcomers to the city who want to buy a home? And this is, you know, kind of balance out, create some equality there, so. Yeah. If not a deferral, then what about sort of an increase to the tax burden, a percentage per year, a couple of percentage points per year? Right, like, so it's ostensibly then static from the time that they enter the Loop program for 10 years, but no increase in tax burden even if, you know, um, and I guess, I I get it. Administering that is also complicated and might necessitate constant, you know, collection of information or data. But, um, just to keep it like at a level similar to, especially if we were able to implement like a more a more rigorous or frequent tax reassessment program countywide.
Yeah, I mean, I think the exemption approach we took with the 25% still operates that way, right? Like, so someone would still owe us that money, that 25% increase, it would just be stuck there. So it would serve similar purposes. At least that's the way I look at it.
But would never go up to like 26, 27, 28 over time.
Right.
Even if, even as their value continues to increase or even as other factors change.
Yeah, I mean, we could consider those types of things, yeah.
My my last question is just trying to understand, um, the, you know, maximum amount that council would establish annually? And not understand it, but sort of, um, how that would, how would that actually work? At what point in the year we would be, you know, what information would you be, you would give us an annual report, but what information would we be considering as we set that amount?
I think what we would do is similarly to what we do during budget season is when I propose bills that actually set the military, you know, set interest rates for overdue tax and things of that nature, that we would take that opportunity in order to set the cap and then it would be approved by council. And we could work together in order to decide what that cap would be. But that's how it would be in order to set it for the next year. That's the intent that we have.
And and I think I sort of touched on this again with the, just the fact that we don't know how the assessment would play out if the county chose to go that route, like, we don't know the timing of the data. Like, so if they have everything ready in June, we would be able to run numbers then and give, like, most likely they'll probably adhere to a similar timeline with what they already do where they give us a provisional file December 15th. So it would probably be in December would be most likely, so it would be. But we would probably be able to ask questions. We we have actually been working to build a a better communication relationship with the assessor's office as we go through our new development of our new system. We ask them questions sporadically about these assessment value changes. Um, and so I think we'd reach out ahead of time and be like, hey, what are you anticipating? Like, you know, how far, maybe we could get an early look at the data just to build our model? Maybe not like, you know, promise not to disclose anything, but just build it so we're ready to go so we can do it quickly. So I wish I wish I had a definitive answer for you, but that those are the complications associated with relying on another entity that hasn't done something for 12, 13, whatever the number of years it's been.
Okay. Well, so I'll just end my comments by saying, and my questions, thank you, um, again. And, um, I think that while it's important to get this done fairly quickly for reasons already expressed, I don't see us passing something and then clawing anything back. I I don't see a future council doing that either. So I do want to make sure we're really deliberative about this now so we can get it right. And and, yeah, maybe tweak in the future, but, um, I think it'd be really difficult to say and publicize we have this thing that we passed and then somehow the AMI is reduced later or, you know, something has changed to sort of feel like we're clawing clawing back the benefits of it later on. So I appreciate your your diligence in answering these questions. We do have a couple, or at least one comment for second round, Councilperson Charlotte. And Councilwoman Gross, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll be quick because I know we've spent a lot of time on this already. So, you know, I understand, I I guess I was trying to put this in real terms for myself. So I understand that when we do the reassessment, we will will not have a windfall. We have the windfall provision stopping us from from having that happen. So right now, we make, uh, or we receive about 142 million in real estate taxes. And that is projected to go down. Our earned income taxes are going to be the bulk of, uh, revenue going forward for the city. That's at 156 now. It's gonna, we're we're speculating that it'll be about 168 in five years. Where real estate taxes go down, I think, 134 is what we're projecting for the next five years. This program will essentially make a guarantee that real estate taxes will not be the bulk of our revenue anymore and earned income will will be more than that because as we do the the reassessment, we won't make more, but some people will receive a more significant break or an abatement. We don't know what that number is. So it's really hard for us to say that in five years, when we've done a reassessment, Loop is in effect, we're projecting 134 million in real estate taxes, but Loop is going to cost us 20 million, 10 million? You know, we we just don't know what that number is. So I I do share the caution of other council members that I'm not sure this is prudent to do right now. We don't know, we don't know how much it's actually going to cost us to pull off a program like this. There's going to be a significant cost or we're not going to raise revenue and then abate it in a different way, which we often do here. We are going to keep the numbers steady and reduce how much we can get off of that essentially until properties, you know, move one generation away from where they are now. I I don't think this is the time to agree to a program like this right now. I don't think it's prudent for us to do that. I, you know, I understand the reasons why we might want to look at doing something like this, but we don't know how, we don't know the price tag. So, you know, and and I'm kind of hearing from you that there's no, there's no forecasting that's been done, no best estimates of how much this could cost us. And I think that's really scary to, uh, sign up for a program when we've got ambulances breaking down and, you know, Lord knows, all my streets need repaved and and a demo budget that's woefully inadequate. Like, I I I think it's really hard to, I I'm really supportive of this idea, but like, I just don't know how much it costs.
The one component that protects us is that cap, which would be set by council via resolution at the The one component that protects us is that cap which would be set by council via resolution at the most likely end of the year as we discussed. So any concerns we would have, we could work through them with council and be like, hey, if it's 5 million, then that's the most we would lose. Um, additionally, if people are opting out of the homestead, there would be a little bit of an offset where the homestead exemption would go away. And you're talking also if a reassessment occurs, it will theoretically stem the bleeding of our assessment value reductions, which is what we are forecasting in that five year model.
Right.
So it's like there are a few different mechanisms that are happening in different directions that is scary. Yes. And that's what we're we're trying our best to predict and be ahead of things. And this is one of the ways to do that is you get this in place to protect the the uh, taxpayers, but the cap would be the mechanism that protects us from a budgetary standpoint. Um, and that's how we would do is and we would try to be as prepared as possible whenever the assessment data points come to us to be able to get a number that makes sense and work with council to to determine what's the the best way to do it. That's the key thing to protect us.
So if if the cap is 10 million, but 20 million of abatement has been applied for.
It would be dispersed equally.
So we would just give people less?
Half.
Right.
I I definitely would feel more comfortable doing this when we have real data and a real cap in front of us than doing this right now. Um, and you know, I I understand why we want to, why why certain things come before us at certain times of the year, but like I'm I'm not sure this is the the time to do this. There's there's too many variables that are that we've not solved for, I think. So, um, again, very supportive of the program, very supportive of a lot of the ways that it's set up, but you know, we've got Director Hornstein back there and I think he needs some more trucks, so.
And and those variables you're talking about are what keep me up at night. So, yeah, I I understand where you're coming from. Yeah.
Yeah, maybe we can call each other and share our sleeplessness. All right, uh, that that's all for me. I appreciate you being here and uh, a lot for us to think about. Thank you.
You, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And it really does strike me how we have, um, you know, there's no backroom committees at city council, like we are all a member of every committee. And I just like to remind the member of the public like this is us like thinking out loud. You just get to watch it live on TV. Like we are trying and it it I think, you know, it is, it's part of our local process here. It's like we're trying to understand all the scenarios, but also all of the language and what are the repercussions and how it's written. So I just want to respond to my thoughts on some of the things I've heard. So, you know, I'm trying to imagine the citizen who has savings that isn't taxed somehow, right? So let's say you have retirement savings. I mean, even if it's your pension, even if it's your 401K, even if it's your regular IRA, even if it's your 401B or whatever it's called, those all show up on your income tax, right? So if you have big savings in retirement accounts and you're spending them, then that's taxes. If you're not retirement age and all of your savings is just cash, like, oh, my God, I got like $2 million in the bank and it's earning, you know, 5%. You're paying tax on that $100,000, right? And so it's still there, you know, so there's still, it's still recorded on your income taxes. So I can't think of a scenario. Now, could I, you know, let's say I've got, ooh, I've got 2 million, you know, I'm 20 years old and I got $2 million in the bank. Could I also sure buy, you know, $100,000 car and then I don't have $2 million in the bank? Yeah, and that's not taxable income. So that's true, right? But I just don't know if it's one of those things where you can't make policies for just like a couple of extreme examples. So it's just something to chew on, right? Like what what is that imaginary citizen? Um, and are are there enough of them to be concerned about? And then, um, similarly about the property tax revenue, it's true. We there is state law on windfall taxes, right? So if we get reassessed, we can't have an excessive windfall, but it isn't exactly the same as our current revenue. So Councilman Charlin's concern that we'll be making less property tax revenue, even if everybody's assessments are, let's say doubled, right? I think we we get about half our revenue right now from property taxes.
Well, yeah.
So like I said, like I'm going to just use 350 million for an easy number.
But we'll say over half of the revenue the city receives on holes from taxes, 30% of that is property taxes or was.
So if $700 million in revenue.
Half of it comes from tax. And then a 30% of that or a a little bit above.
So only 30% of 350 million roughly? So you're saying, oh, that's that's it? 100 and 110 million is property tax? Right. So we're only getting 110 million of our 700 million we're spending.
35%, yeah, 30, 35%.
Um, so but still, it's not that we have to, you know, stay at exactly 110 for the next year after we're assessed. So let's say everybody's assessments are doubled. They allow a $10 million windfall is the limit. Or 10%, sorry, 10%. So it would be around 10 million, 11 million.
I think it's five.
Right? My staff just told me, hey, staff, you just told me it was 10%.
I think it's it's supposed to be revenue neutral, but I think we can.
The revenue neutral is around 5%. Is that what the state says?
Yes.
Right? So it's not exactly that. So and so we will know a number that, um, there will be a number um, that it increases. So yeah, it's not like we have a $700 million revenue and, you know, we're going to be giving away all that money in low income homeowner or low longtime owner occupied protection discounts. Uh, not by long shot, not as far as I can see. And plus, at first I was like not sure about this. Establish council shall establish by resolution, a maximum amount of total tax dollars allowed to be exempted under this chapter for the upcoming tax year. And then I really thought about it and you know what I think? I think that should apply to all our all our LERTA programs. Right? And so the example that I gave of that one condominium that got, you know, tens of thousands of dollars of property tax abatement automatically, there are hundreds of those in my district. That's not the, it's not just one example, right? There's a couple hundred people who bought very, very expensive condos who are getting a discount probably bigger than than this one. So, you know, let's look at how much we're giving away. You know, I think it's been something in the last 10 years. We have given up something like 80 million dollars in abatements. Um, so if we have concerns that this one is too expensive, I say I'm going to put amendments into the other ones that says that we established by resolution annually, a maximum amount of total tax dollars allowed to be exempted under those chapters. Um, so there's, there's a lot to discuss. So I don't, I think I made my points, uh, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks. Councilman Mosley.
Thank you again. I'm going to be really brief. I I appreciate Councilman Charlin's point, uh, you know, about, uh, you know, fiscal concerns, you know, but I but I but I know speaking, you know, in my district, you know, when there's, you know, development proposals and and proposals that would actually, you know, uh, bring a windfall that the state does not prevent us from accepting, which is, you know, more development, you know, uh, increasing property value through uh, people building, um, you know, uh, either new commercial or residential, uh, you know, developments. But one of the things that stands in the way is the fear and anxiety that people have about their tax bill going up when new developments come online. So I think that, you know, uh, a proposal such as this, you know, is something that when new development comes into communities, this is something that we could talk to residents about, those longtime residents that have fear, because that's generally the biggest obstacle that I have in my district, you know, when folks uh, bring proposals for development into the community is people is like, whoa, this is gentrification. My tax bill is going to go up, you know, what does this mean to this home that I lived in for 30 or 40 years? But if we could put protections in place to to stop that fear and anxiety and create more growth and development, then we are bringing new revenue into the city that we can accept because there is no anti-windfall for for new growth and development coming to the city and and new population um, and and more people coming back to the city. So I think that, you know, this is one of the reasons to support something like this at this time, because then this allows us, you know, in the districts across the city where new development is coming online to say, look, no, this isn't going to gentrify you out of your neighborhood. The longtime residents are going to be able to stay in the neighborhood regardless of how much, you know, uh, the the new houses um, ca- get caused once they get reassessed. Um, so I think that's a reason to support that. I, you know, I understand the the concerns, but I do think that this can open up another avenue um, that that has, you know, been a stumbling block in in districts all over the city when new development comes online where the community says, no, we don't want this in our neighborhood because I don't want this to gentrify me out of the neighborhood. Now we have potentially a tool that would stop that from happening, that would also allow us to bring new revenue and increase the amount of 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 real estate revenue that we can bring in because, you know, we are bringing in new development, you know, those those parcels are going to be worth more, you know, um, you know, when they come online. So I think, you know, that that's a reason to, you know, support this in the wake of I think the very valid, you know, concerns that some members have.
Thank you. Councilman, um, Wilson.
All right, I'm going to make this as quick as possible. I just want to say I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah. What are you talking about?
We go back too far.
No, because I mean, that's exactly what I hear. Well, let me just try and sum up what a part of, you know, what you said is is what's resonating with me is that, you know, I have, uh, residents that they're, um, they're concerned about people being, you know, priced out of the neighborhood and not being able to afford their home if it's reassessed, you know, and and their taxes go up exponentially. If there's a 25 unit development that goes, you know, up down the street and they're like, well, what's that going to do to all the people that are living in, you know, in their homes that they bought, you know, 30 years ago, they're going to be able to afford to live there. So this really spoke to them, this program. And this isn't new. This isn't very, you know, old. I mean, I don't know, what's the date on this? Like, what's like the state gave us the I can't remember the whole timeline here, but this goes back to.
The state gave us the ability to do it, I believe, last year, but we actually had um, something on the books in 1993, but we couldn't institute it because it actually required us to go through the county, which doesn't have a program and couldn't.
Yeah, so there's there's a timeline. There's an old timeline with this and we're, you know, happy to um, see this, you know, come to fruition and at least I am. Because I I've been pointing to this option for some time to people who've brought up the concerns of um, you know, uh, luxury housing. Everyone loves using the term lux- everything's luxury. As long as you build it in Pittsburgh, it's luxury. It's just, you know, I don't know. It's it's something that's that's happening. It's a phenomenon. And if, you know, uh, just as long as you build something. So this luxury housing that's coming into Pittsburgh, uh, this is now uh, going to raise your prices and everything. So it's great to see this this um, loop program in place. And, uh, I, you know, I'm a proponent of, you know, building more. Obviously, I've made comments here previously about more tax revenue as needed. And so, yes, we should be building. We should be um, breaking barriers to making sure that more can be built and so that we can in turn get more tax revenue. But this these programs like this is what is going to resonate with uh, people that want to continue to see people live in their affordable home. So thanks. And thanks for your comments, uh, my esteemed colleague, using your own words, my esteemed colleague, uh, Councilman Kohari Mosley.
Thank you. Good friend.
Thank you, Senators. Uh, is there any other comment for a second round? No further questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to hold for cable cast public hearing. All those in favor of holding Bill 1605 for cable cast pu- public hearing, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, abstained. Bill be held for public hearing. Thank you so much to our partners in finance.
Thank you.
For answering all of our questions.
Thank you.
That moves us on to invoices. Do we have a motion on invoices?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of invoices, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Invoices are approved. That moves us on to P cards. There's their motion on P cards.
To move.
Second. Second. All those in favor of P cards, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative, uh, P cards are approved. Public Works and Infrastructure Committee chaired by Councilwoman Warwick.
Bill 1606, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Automated Red Light Enforcement Grant Program in the amount not to exceed 335,981 dollars and 88 cents to replace traffic signals at Center Avenue and North Death Ridge Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? I just want to say we've been asking for a new traffic signal here. There's never been one there before, um, for years and to be able to get money from the state through the Arlie program that we will now be then paying into once we institute our Arlie program is just incredibly exciting. So um, we, there's senior housing right there. There's a bust off across the street. One resident got hit by a car and broke her ankle. Like, it's just a horrendous intersection that doesn't have a signal. So to get this signal and to get money for it is incredibly exciting. So thanks to, uh, Domi and everyone who has worked on this and all the advocates from the buildings nearby to get this into place. I know it's not built yet. That'll be another exciting moment, but just to get the money is great. All those in favor of Bill 1606, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, 1607.
Bill 1607, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget and the director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the Automated Red Light Enforcement Grant Program amount not to exceed 647,049 dollars and 45 cents to replace signals at the intersection of East General Robinson Street and Sandusky Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1607, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, 1608.
Bill 1608, resolution granting unto BH Venture One LP their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own costs and expense at no cost to the city. New permanent building foundation that will extend into the right of way at 1406 Fifth Avenue, First Ward, Sixth Council District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1608, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation, 1609.
Bill 1609, resolution amending resolution 249 of 2023, which authorized the mayor and the directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to amend and renew the lease agreement with Beaver Avenue Associates LLC by continuing to provide at least space at 1301 Beaver Avenue for the purposes of housing the facilities maintenance division of the Department of Public Works by extending the term through March 31, 2028 with new property owner, 1301 Beaver Avenue LLC managed by the Regency Transportation Group LTD.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1609, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Land Use and Economic Development Committee chaired by Councilman Wilson.
Bill 1610, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of City Planning to enter into a professional services agreement and or contracts with HRNA Advisors, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for work on the Federal Emergency Management Agency's Flood Mitigation Assistance Grant for Sawmill Run Boulevard.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Bill 1610, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation, Bill 1611.
Bill 1611, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of permits, licenses and inspections for the issuance of a warrant in favor of the Frank O'Harris Pittsburgh Center at Penn State for the per- for the purchase of the National Green Infrastructure Certification Program training, cost not to exceed $8,000.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. I realize it's not very much money, but I'm very curious about this. Can we, is there someone who can is can is Director Lucas the right person? Or no, sorry. Okay, please join us at the table. Okay, great. We can promote Kyla as well. Kayla.
Sixteen eleven?
Okay. Thank you. If you can just introduce yourself and...
Yes, Monica Bender, Assistant Director of Licensing and Administration for PLI. And then we also have Josh Evans online.
Oh, okay, sorry, Josh Evans. I apologize. Okay, great. Well, I, hopefully, I, this won't be a super-long discussion. Familiar with the Penn State Center, I guess now rebranded to be the Franco Harris Pittsburgh Center at Penn State, which is a lovely touch. And so, this, and I'm also aware of their certification around, you know, how to create, inspect, all of the things regarding green infrastructure, stormwater management. What will be the purpose of having PLI and all of our, you know, who will be going through this training? What will be the purpose of it? You know, what, how will this actually play out in real life? And is this the first time we've done this, or is this an ongoing partnership?
This is, this is a first go at this training. So the intent is to have various stormwater-related staff, so the folks that are regulating the stormwater permits and inspections, attend this training to deepen our understanding of management of those systems. I can probably tap Josh Evans online if he wants to speak about it. And then I do see Kyla on there as well. Josh?
Thanks, Monica. Yeah, so, you know, since March twenty-two, can everybody hear me?
We can hear you. You can just introduce yourself and your position.
Oh, yes. I'm Josh Evans. I'm one of the permitting supervisors with PLI.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Thank you. Since March twenty-two, when PLI took over, and doing the stormwater reviews, and the stormwater permit was launched per the Title thirteen changes, we know we've had, obviously, a lot of permit submissions for stormwater. We've been doing them for almost three years now. Today, I believe, we've only been doing TPA inspections for them, as our stormwater inspectors get up to speed. So trainings like this are geared from a kind of a field experience perspective, and also just to kind of deepen our understanding of the different stormwater systems and technology out there. That kind of goes into a lot of our submissions. It's one of those situations where we get a lot of similar submissions, but then when we get the kind of new on stuff that is a newer green technology that we haven't seen before, it can be challenging. So these type of trainings just kind of help us learn what's out there and how these systems work better to understand the submissions and also how they apply to our regulations.
So, this will deepen your understanding, and that makes complete sense. My question is sort of about the breakdown in responsibility. Can you help me understand how what you're inspecting for is differentiates from, say, Pittsburgh Water inspecting or verifying that, you know, a customer is exempt from paying the stormwater fee that they have implemented? Is there ground truthing that you're doing to help them? Is it separate? Is it only complaint-based? Like, how are you coming to inspect around stormwater currently?
It would be separate. So our purview right is for private construction allies. So, you know, any new developments going in, they would be required to meet the stormwater regulations, which would be some sort of stormwater infrastructure on their property, right? So we would be inspecting that, we would be reviewing their submissions and inspecting that infrastructure on their private property. The county plumbing and PWSA, they're more on the right-of-way, where we're going to be more of the private infrastructure reviewer inspector.
Okay.
Yeah, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I can just, apologies I'm sick today, so my voice is a little weird, but I can just clarify that Pittsburgh Water is regulating all impervious surface area that we currently have in the city, whereas what we're looking at for the stormwater permit is any new development. And so, these are when we have changes to development sites or things that have to come in for things like a building permit, they may qualify for stormwater permit review as well. And so, those are the inspections that we're discussing here, not necessarily ground-truthing Pittsburgh Water's stormwater fee.
Got it. That answered my question. Thank you all so much. I don't have any further questions. Are there any others from council? Seeing none. Okay, thank you. All those in favor of Bill sixteen eleven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That moves us on to Recreation, Youth, and Senior Services Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Cale Smith.
New Papers, Bill fifteen ninety-eight, resolution providing for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Fence Screen LLC for the purchase of a sound screen for Moore Park pickleball courts, in the amount of nine thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars and seventeen cents over one year.
Motion to approve. Discussion?
Second.
I defer to Councilman.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cale Smith, Councilwoman. So, yeah, this was Moore Park, if you're familiar. It's a pickleball court right next to Pioneer Avenue, a lot of residents live there. And I got a lot of complaints, you know, I mean, everybody loves pickleball. We're not looking to eliminate it by any means, but the clean, clean back and forth all night long was driving people up a wall, I guess. And I know Chris Hornstein was here just a little bit ago, but it was, I think, his idea to come up with this soundproof barrier that they sell or to erect there. So I'm grateful for it. We looked at trying to move it to the other side of the park, and there was complications there. So this way, you know, everybody gets to play pickleball, and hopefully at a minimum sound reverations throughout the night. Thanks.
What does it sound like?
Well, it depends who's playing. It could be bing, 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 or it could be bing, bing, you know. It's basically...
Someone's going to put that.
You know, if you're fast and you're good.
Councilwoman Gross.
Thanks. I just, actually, I think I have a question for the Clerk's office. I'm trying to find it in my standing committee packet. So Bill fifteen ninety-eight is about more park pickleball, but it says the attachments are about the Downing Street steps, which were in Polish Hill. So, that's the other bill. And I checked the other bill, the Downing Street steps does have Downing Street steps attached. I think you're just missing your attachment, so we should fix it for Tuesday. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for noticing.
Thank you. Councilperson Charlin, followed by Councilwoman Cale Smith.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I don't know if anyone's here to speak there. I'm just, one, obviously, pickleball is exploding, and a lot of people like it. It's great, seniors can play it, and all those sort of things there. I'm just curious how this works, like, like, what this looks like. Do you have any, or does anyone here to speak on how the sound, was it a sound wall? Is that right? Sound screen, how that, like, I am, I guess, I'll wait to see after yours is installed, because we, there's a couple places we want pickleball courts, but we know that it's going to drive the neighbors insane. My brother actually plays at your pickleball court. Yeah, him and his girlfriend are pretty good. So, I, yeah, I would be really interested to see, like, how this technology works, and if it's something we can enter into a bigger contract with, if it's, if it's successful, so.
Interrogatory?
Yes.
I could just speak to, I believe it's, I want to say canvas, like, almost like a tent material, that's put up above or beyond, I guess, between the residence and the pickleball court. So I'm curious to see exactly how it works myself.
Yeah. Maybe you and I will meet on the court.
Maybe you and I are together, and his girlfriend, and how's that?
Yeah, it would not be very good. All right. Yeah, I'll be interested to see what else happens here. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cale Smith.
I'm just going to add that there are quiet pickleballs now, that they just, just start, yeah. So somebody just pointed it out to me, and, because they want them in Banksville, too. They want them in Banksville, too. So I'm just really kind of curious why we didn't go that route. But, but also, I just want to know, I don't know if there has to be an RFP for this or not. And so I just really want to make sure before next week that I have that information. I'll vote in the positive today, but if I find out there needs to be, or wasn't, then I'll vote no.
Thank you. And to that point, we are always notified underneath the bill title if there was a waiver.
Right. No, I saw that. I saw that.
So I don't see a waiver here. So, but, yeah, still fair question, just wanted to note our new procedure. All right, any further discussion on Bill fifteen ninety-eight? Seeing none. All in favor of Bill fifteen ninety-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. That brings us to Innovation, Performance, Asset Management and Technology Committee, chaired by Councilwoman Gross.
New Papers, Bill fifteen eighty-one, resolution amending Resolution six twenty-one of two thousand twenty, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into an agreement or agreements and amendments thereto with ERP One Consulting, Inc., for the provision of services, including professional services, consultation, and day-to-day managed services of the City of Pittsburgh, JDE Edwards Enterprise One, nine point two application, by increasing the approved amount by three hundred thousand dollars, and extending the agreed for an additional three years, for an amended total cost not to exceed eight hundred fifty thousand dollars over seven years.
Motion to approve. Brief discussion?
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. So we were talking about these systems recently, Council, remember, we were saying, like, we're going to do an RFP, but it's even going to take a couple years to figure out exactly what we're requesting proposals for, what does each department need? So this extends the current system while we're figuring out how to put the giant package that, you know, does all the financials for city departments out to bid. So we need more time with the current system.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill fifteen eighty-one, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm abstaining.
One abstention. Affirmative recommendation. Bill fifteen eighty-six.
Bill fifteen eighty-six, resolution authorizing the mayor and the director of permits, licenses, and inspections for the issuance of a warrant in favor of Building I, Inc., for the purchase of their software and related support services for an interactive map that internal and public visual display of planning, permit, license, and violation data at a cost not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Is Building I up and running currently?
Still using it, yeah.
No, what's it called?
Agency Counter.
Agency Counter, okay. So it's just changed the name? I'm just trying to understand, because I get a lot of questions about Building I.
I think we have someone in the audience, if you'd like to ask, Councilwoman. Because I actually can't answer that, sorry.
No, I'll just vote okay. I'll vote, I don't want to, I'll vote in favor of it today, but I'll ask later. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill fifteen eighty-six, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Affirmative recommendation. That brings us to Intergovernmental and Educational Affairs Committee, chaired by Councilman Mosley.
New Papers, Bill fifteen eighty-seven, resolution authorizing the mayor, the director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the director of the Department of Public Safety, to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Allegheny County and the United States Department of Justice, for the purpose of receiving grant funds from two thousand twenty-four Burn Justice Assistance Grant, in the amount not to exceed fifty-one thousand six hundred fourteen dollars, to purchase a real-time asset management technology platform.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. My only question here is, I thought that we, and maybe this is more public safety-focused and not the whole city, but I thought that we had purchased an asset management technology platform, like, a year ago, that would help us. I remember having a discussion about, like, putting barcodes on all of our assets, and tagging it, and understanding what assets we have. Is anyone here to speak to this bill, as to what, how this differentiates? If not, I'm happy to get the question later. I just wanted to understand a little bit further what's, what the difference is. Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill fifteen eighty-seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Affirmative recommendation. Bill fifteen eighty-eight.
Bill fifteen eighty-eight, resolution authorizing a cooperation agreement or agreements providing for the transfer of funds not to exceed eighty thousand dollars to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority, for the purchase of vehicles for use by the City of Pittsburgh Park Rangers. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development's local share account statewide.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of Bill fifteen eighty-eight, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Affirmative recommendation. Our final bill of the day, Bill fifteen eighty-nine.
Bill fifteen eighty-nine, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh, to enter into a cooperation agreement with Pittsburgh Regional Transit for post-construction ownership, access, and maintenance of certain city steps to be constructed around Downing Street in the Sixth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, at no cost to the city.
Motion to hold for two weeks.
Second.
Discussion. Seeing none. All those in favor of a two-week hold, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Bill will be held for two weeks. That exhausts our standing committee's agenda. We do have some meeting announcements. This afternoon at one PM, council will hold a pre-agenda interview for Tammy Thompson as a member to be appointed to the Housing Authority of Pittsburgh Board of Directors. Also, this afternoon at two PM, council will hold a cable cast post-agenda discussion on zoning, chaired by Councilwoman Cale Smith. Monday, March twenty-fourth, at six PM, council will hold a public hearing scheduled at Westwood K through Five School, five oh eight Shady Hill Road, Pittsburgh, one five two oh five, relative to the Department of Permits, Licenses, and Inspections. Registration will close at four PM the day of the hearing. This is for in-person comment only, there is no virtual option. Next week, council will hold their regular meeting on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, and their standing committee's meeting on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, both at ten AM. To register to speak at these meetings and hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage by the deadline. You might also call the Clerk's office at four one two two five five two one three eight. Is there anything for members? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move. Second.
All those in favor, aye. Meeting is adjourned.